Okay, welcome to the City of Treasure Island Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for December 16th, 2021. If you wish to speak on a topic which is on today's agenda, speaker's card is available on the table to my right and must be completed and given to the chairperson. Please do not address the board from your seat, but rather from the podium where your comments can be heard by all and recorded as required by Florida statute. Unscheduled topics may be presented under the public comments section of the agenda. If we could, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, if everybody would please silence your cell phones so we don't get any unnecessary interruptions. Everybody who's going to speak before the board today, would you please raise your hands and be sworn in?
One, two, three, four, five. If you would all stand for one second. Raise your right hands, do you affirm that the statements you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm here because I'm mic'd. Chair Harris, would you like me to do your roll call while I'm here?
Sure, sounds good to me.
Pam Berengasio?
Here.
Mariana Craybill?
Here.
Linda Driscoll?
Here.
Lynn Fisher? Ross Sanchez?
Here.
Richard Harris?
Here.
Michael Herdabees?
Here.
We do have one absent member, so I don't know who wants to be the voter today. Chris, okay, so, and Chris is here. So that will be your quorum, your voters for today, and I'm going to also mark you as present. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any ex parte communication that anybody needs to disclose? Seeing none, no minutes to approve. We have the list of our cases that we've heard in the past, some are ongoing, some are not. Is there any ones you want to hit on there, Jamie?
Yeah, we have a number of projects that are under construction right now. Quite a few single-family homes on Gulf Boulevard and West Gulf Boulevard. Our two townhome developments, the one on Third Street and the one on First Street, those are both under construction as well. The Treasure Island Ocean Club, the 63-unit condo hotel, they're almost finished with their permitting process. Hopefully, they're just working on a few minor floodplain issues. So that should be hopefully good to go soon. And then, we also did get one extension request for the COVID emergency order, and that was for the casino resort at 11295 Gulf Boulevard. So they actually just submitted their building permit application recently.
Just curious, has the Ocean Club gotten their demo permit yet?
Yes.
It looks like it's getting close to starting.
Is there any licensing discussions with Ocean Club for that area that's behind there?
We had talked with the developer about that, and he indicated they are not interested at this time.
Okay, so then, that just brings me to my next question. It's on the agenda item, but like, Arvilla, which is right next door to it, you know, where the property comes to an end of, I guess, let's say, the structure or the property line to the boardwalk, and in our next meeting, can I get feedback on who's responsible for maintaining that land between Arvilla, because I mean, Ocean Club's going to be the same way. And I don't know if you've seen what's back there, but it's pretty embarrassing.
So to clarify, we're looking at the area beyond the property line and-
Correct.
-prior to the beach trail?
Yeah, so boardwalk, the area between boardwalk and property line of Arvilla. Thank you. Is there any update on the Treasure Island Hotel? Tiki Hut, I don't know what it's called, is that?
Treasure Island Resort.
Treasure Island Resort. That's had caution tape around it for over, close to two months now.
The Treasure Island Resort Tiki Hut is being constructed, that's what he's asking about.
They have a current permit there, but I don't know the progress of construction of it.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question on the 8572 West Gulf Boulevard. What happened with the dune destruction, they said?
So there was a stop-work order issued a few months ago because during their demo process for the existing structure that was there, some destruction of the dune system in the back had occurred.
Wow.
So our building official had issued a stop-work order, but because it's the dune system, it also involves the state now, so.
There were some surveyors out there yesterday, there, surveying to figure out what they got to build back, I'm sure. Okay, we'll move on to our first case. First case is 9A, variance dash 000179-2021153, 104th Avenue. Variance requests to increase the maximum height of a fence/wall located within a front yard to repair, and it spanned upon an existing non-conforming wall. The applicant is here today, Mr. Greg Smith and Carmen Beechey. I knew I'd remember it in a second. If you would, go to the podium and make your case, please. Present your case.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
This is in our digital packet, correct?
It is.
Okay.
It is, I was just going to reference a couple of spots as we were going through, and I thought it might be easier if we just all had it. Yes, you should have received it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning, Zoning Board. We appreciate this opportunity to visit with you. I also need to thank Kathryn and Jamie for their work in helping us get to this point. These are not, you know, I appreciate that a process like this has to be pretty steadfast. I mean, every case is going to be different, but you got to have a real process in order to-
Mr. Smith, let me interrupt you, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
All right, Gregory Smith, 16500 Gulf Boulevard, Unit 456, North Reddington Beach, Florida, 33708.
Thanks.
Soon to be a resident of Treasure Island. Just a quick intro on myself and maybe a couple of words on Carmen before we jump into this. This is kind of an interesting day. It was almost 58 years ago to the day that I made my first trip to Treasure Island. Came down from a farm in Indiana, and had a chance to come down here. I never really thought that I'd ever be coming back to talk about what we're doing. So it's a real opportunity and a dream come true. I selected Carmen because he has added value all up and down the beaches to build the property. We've been at it now for almost two years. It's been, it's been an experience. We're excited about it, we're hoping to be in this spring. We first encountered some issues back in probably late 19, early 20. I visited in with the previous mayor and the previous police chief about some issues. He suggested that we come up with a comprehensive plan, which we did. If you look at the first page of my handout, that is the architect's rendering of what we plan to do on, would like to do on 104th Avenue in the front yard. There is an existing fence there now, or wall, it's been there for 60-some years. The reply that came back, I guess maybe we're off on the northwest corner, potentially off a few inches. It's, I don't know if the land moved or the fence moved, or Carmen and I didn't move anything, so we will absolutely fix it, you know, so when it comes time to get the wall in, we will fix whatever few inches where the wall potentially is off. The comprehensive solution was developed to take care of two hardships that we're experiencing over there. The first one relates to the parking in the public right-of-way. The second, and I'm going to go back into more detail on these hardships, the second one relates to the homeless issue as well as some, you know, I'm not sure they're all homeless in this area, some of them may be homeless, they show up by car, but they're more, I call them professional scammers. I mean, they show up with a scripted scam. And I think they come in on the weekends, I think they're probably pickpockets by nature. They have a chance to scam me on the way out. That seems to be something they like to do. What we're proposing to do, and this is very important to me and it's very important to Carmen, that we're not going to do anything that would mess up Treasure Island. And there is no impact, what we want to do with this fence, there is zero impact on anybody except for two groups of people. The fence, if you know where the property is, the fence faces across, there's four posts there right now, four five-foot posts that need to be fixed up, painted, whatever. We want to add two more, but there's nobody across the street from us. So across the front of that fence, you drive by, now you're going to see four ugly posts. When we're done, you'll drive by and see six nice posts. Okay, so we're, they're five-foot posts, we're not, you know, we're not trying to change anything. But there are two groups of people, I'll tell you, this is going to impact. It's going to, it's going to impact those people that don't want to pay for parking, that park in front of there instead of being in the public parking lots, it's going to impact them. And that's, you know, best I can tell, it's probably close to 2,000 cars a year that park between my house and Fuzzy Barnett's house. The other group that's going to be impacted are the homeless people that have slept in my garage, were on the property last weekend. I went over there one Saturday morning at 6:30 because I wanted to go over there and check drainage. We'd had a lot of rain on that Friday night. So I went over early because I wanted to check drainage. Being a whole farm kid, I'm all about tiled ditches and grass waterways and that type of stuff. Somebody's in the garage at 6:30 in the morning. Now, I walked around the property, came around on the left side of the property, walked towards the garage. They saw me, they got out, all I saw was their back. Had I come around the other way, we might have had a head-on collision. So, you know, this past weekend, we had the garage shut up with plastic covers, zipped down because we were doing painting on the inside of the house. Saturday morning, I don't go by there till 11 o'clock, so they were long gone. The garage is completely opened up, unzipped, covers pulled back. So, you know, we have homeless just kind of wandering on the property. I talked to the previous police chief, I talked to them at the end of the, you know, probably around the end of 19, early 20, and they agreed that they would increase some patrols, they would kind of keep an eye on it. The thing that's happened, though, is since then, and, you know, we've had Chief Barkley talk to our TI focus group the last two months, Chief Barkley will tell you, things have gotten worse. There are more homeless people than there were in 2020. They're more aggressive. There's no question about it. And so what we're proposing to do is we're going to put up something that will impact those homeless people, because again, Chief Barkley, just two weeks or, November 30th, said that the best thing you can do is come up with some proactive prevention. They've done it, they've done it in the city. They've trimmed the trees at the Allied Bank Building, so the homeless people don't want to congregate, they've cut the shade trees. They've adjusted things at Walgreens parking lot. What we're going to do is we're just going to put this fence so people just can't wander onto the property, whether intentionally or accidentally, whether it be the homeless, whether it be the scammers. The homeless are very cagey people, they come onto the property, I have my dog with me, they come up and want to pet my dog. That's the first thing, they want to talk, they talk about the dog, I'm nice to them, and then the next thing you know, they want money. They come on the property wanting work. Again, I can't run over to the police chief and say, this guy came over and wanted work, he wanted me to give him $100, he's got a Publix bag with a couple of empty beer cans in it, but he wants to haul the trash away. He want, you know, so I refer him to Carmen, we got a sign over there, I get, tell him to call Carmen, and I get, basically, I get an F you at that point. You know, there's no way if I give him $100, they're coming back the next day. I mean, I may be slow but not stupid. So I think that's a terrible issue right now. It's not, you know, I mean, someone said it's a police issue, Chief Barkley says it's not, and I agree with him, he says it's a community issue. And it's something that's going to have to be dealt with. And again, all I'm trying to do is just proactive preventive protection. The fence just keeps, it impacts that group. Now, the other thing that's really unique about this request, I'm sure you guys have seen and heard it all, but we're going to go beyond that, and it's all part of the comprehensive plan. We're going to clean up and beautify the public right-of-way by landscaping, by putting in sidewalks. We're also going to fix what is the most environmentally unfriendly drainage you could have in front of the property. I mean, it is, it is a cement swale that runs down 104th, and it washes sand, gravel, silt, dirt, oil, gasoline, you name it, it washes it into the, you know, and then when a heavy rain comes, we have water backing up next to the Barnett's property because the pipe is half-full of sand, sludge. We're going to put grass, we're going to make it so the water runs through a grass swale, filters itself, and then into the drain. So we're going to, we're going to fix the drainage problem for the city. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to force cars into parking the public lots. Because the solution, part of the comprehensive solution is this establishing the property line, and that's more for the homeless part of it. But the other part of it, the parking, as the former police chief told me when I first brought this issue up, you know, I wish I was smart enough to figure it out, but I have little or no architectural experience or building experience, and so he told me to go over here to 108th Street and said, "Look what we did on 108, this is the way you don't have parking in the public right-of-way." And if you look on, if you look at your exhibit that's attached, if you look at page, if you look at page six, you'll see some photos, and these, you know, like I said, I wish I was smart enough to figure all this out, but the mayor, the former mayor and the former police chief said, over on 108th, what we did is we put in landscaping, grass, sidewalk, more grass. We put a sign up, we put an official no parking sign up, and that was put up by the city. You can see the picture there, the sign, and nobody parks over there. Because as the police chief said, anybody knows you don't park on sidewalks. And if you occasionally do, you'll, you know, we'll tow them. What the chief did not want to get involved with, I totally agree with him, over there on 104th, you'd be like, you couldn't keep it, you couldn't tow fast enough. I mean, you would tow a car and somebody would park in it, you know, before, before someone else even, you know, had a chance to come back with a tow truck. So he didn't want to get into that, he said, "We don't run a towing service." On beach days, we need to be focused on public lewdness, public drunkenness, assault. You know, he's got his hands full on beach days, he doesn't want to be running a towing service. I don't blame him. And this was the former police chief with the feedback I got when we first started addressing this problem in early 2020. It was right at the end of his tenure, and, you know, a lot of follow-up probably didn't happen because he actually left the post. But if you turn to Exhibit 5 in your package, if you turn to Exhibit 5, Page 1, it's actually Page 12 in your package. This is me trying to take a picture out of my SUV, I'm coming out of my driveway. There's only three cars at this point in time, it's fairly early in the day, and there's three cars, and I can't see anywhere close to around the curve. If you flip over to Page 13, you'll see what typically happens on the weekends. It's not, and it, you know, it's, it's not just in front of my property, it goes on in front of the Barnett's property, and the Barnett's, of course, will very interested in how we resolve this, and they'd like to participate in any comprehensive solution, obviously. Because the cars, if you can see on, you know, if I'm trying to come out of my driveway, you can't see either way, you're just pulling blind out into a road that curves on both ends. I mean, that's just, that's undue hardship. I mean, a person ought to have the right to be able to come out on their property without having to hope that nothing's coming around the curve. Now, does the solution that the police chief and the mayor work over on 108? I think the answer is a resounding yes. I was over there during standing ovations trying to show my family the house they were in for Thanksgiving. I was trying to show the family the house. We were up on the second floor, just kind of looking around. On 104th Avenue, there was a car with, sitting out on 104th with its turn signal on, waiting on somebody to pull out in front of my house. The people that were leaving my house had two chairs, a cooler, a baby stroller. It was five to seven minutes, and this car's sitting on 104th Street with its blinker on, like it was Best Buy on Black Friday, trying to get a parking spot. We walked around, just to get, show, I want to show the family of the town, we walked around to 108th over here where you've got the sidewalk, the landscaping, where you've got a finished out right-of-way, nobody, nobody parked there. Nobody. So the solution will work. And that's, I think that's what's important, is, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to spend the money unless I feel like it's going to work. I've talked to enough people that I, that we think that this comprehensive solution of fixing the public right-of-way, so it's, looks like a right-of-way instead of a, I mean, you know, it looks, right now, it's a mudhole. I mean, if you turn to Page 16, you'll see the public right-of-way outside my neighbor's property. Turn to Page 16, and that's just not, that's not what you want when you're rolling up to City Hall. You know, the city's going to spend a lot of money on a new City Hall, and you're going to roll up looking at, looking at that. You know, that's my neighbor's, I can't speak for him, but I'm pretty sure he'll take care of it. You go back, you know, flip back to Page 3 or Page 4, and you'll see the, what the public right-of-way looks like there, it's what it looks like now. Flip back to Page 1, and you'll see, you'll see what we're going to do with the comprehensive solution. And again, it's all in the front of the property, nothing blocking any water, nothing down any sides. There's already four-foot wall there, we just want to connect it to the new privacy wall, there's, it's already there. The 18-inch curb is already there. We, all we really want to do is clean it up, and, I don't know, I'm simple, but I think, I think Page 1 looks better than Page 2, or Page 3. And we're willing to invest whatever it takes to fix the drainage, to make it, you know, to make it a presentable public walkway. But you can see numerous pictures, if you look at, these were all taken at different times. I've got a whole camera full of them as I was out there trying to do my extrapolation on how many cars would actually park there in a year's time. You can look at 12, 13, 14, it's just, it's just impossible to deal with. We, we've had a couple of go-arounds with the architect on this. I took feedback from the prior police chief and the prior mayor to kind of get to the start. I validated after one of the TI focus group meetings with Chief Barkley that the fence would make sense from what, you know, what he's trying to do with homeless people, just trying to make it a little bit uncomfortable for them. I mean, his hands are tied, you know, I mean, I get it, I get it. I worked in New York City during stop and frisk with Mayor Bloomberg. I worked in New York City under Mayor de Blasio, after stop and frisk is a whole nother ballgame. People's hands are tied now, and he's doing the best he can. The challenge I have is with my family and all being in there, and I'm not against homeless people, I'm sympathetic to the whole plight, but they are not mentally stable. And you don't, you know, no one in this room can say when somebody's going to crack or they aren't going to crack. And it's just like the chief said, we got to do proactive prevention. And that's, that's what we're trying to do. I don't know how much time I have, I think it's probably a good time for some questions. If Carmen's the, Carmen's the expert on the construction and what we need to do, and, you know, we're all about drainage, I put six-inch drains in my seawall when I could have done half that size. We're going to fix that drain in the front. It's just, it's just unbecoming to a city like Treasure Island to have a mudhole on your way to your City Hall. You know, it's watered amounts to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for the applicant for the board? Pam?
Just a couple. I'm sure you're aware that the items that you're talking about, putting in the right-of-way, it's not something that this board deals with, that that is, I'd say, right-of-way use permit for lack of the Treasure Island term, but that has to go through Public Works. And then I don't, don't know, Jennifer, does that also go to the commission on the, the improvements he's talking about within the right-of-way, landscaping the stormwater?
It's actually-
That just Public Works?
Public Works.
So that's-
But you can, I understand, you can landscape the public right-of-way.
Right, so that, my only point was that's not something that this board would be dealing with today. I see your, your construction, you know, two, three times a day, I applaud you for your efforts, it's beautiful, definitely. But just so that you understood, and I'm sure staff explained it to you, that that use of the right-of-way and those improvements is not something that Planning and Zoning would be voting on today to approve or not approve. If you're aware of that.
It's actually on Page 3 of the staff report.
Right, so you know, you know-
Yeah, no, and we can, I assume that we-
The other question to you, and it's just, again, I applaud your efforts. It's a beautiful home, and you're definitely have cleaned up what was there before. And I understand your issues. Have you talked to staff about what you could build that would not require a variance? You realize that one is there, is non-conforming, and that staff is recommending against any additional non-conforming use? Have you looked at what you could construct that would be in compliance and would not require a variance? Did you have that discussion?
I had it with the previous city manager, and he, his recommendation was to take it to Planning and Zoning. We also had it with, Carmen had discussions with one of the inspectors. They were, they seemed to, I mean, they seemed to be fine with it at the time. And then, but, you know, the prior city manager wanted us to come to Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, it's always hard for staff, because it's not that they don't support the beautification of the property, and obviously, you took what was almost a commercial structure, I think it was multifamily, it was horrible. I mean, I saw it a lot, so I know, you've really cleaned it up. You know, but there are codes that the city is required to go by, and there are requirements for variances and homelessness and, and, you know, the criminal element aren't part of that. And I applaud, again, your efforts on the right-of-way improvements, and I hope that goes smoothly for you through Public Works.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you kind of had, you knew that coming through the process.
Yeah, no, in fact, I mean, you know, I guess the old mayor's conversation is probably, you know, like a dime in a cup of coffee 50 years ago, but what we, what we talked about was, when he talked, actually, he was on Segway, I followed him over to 108th so he could walk me through the project, and he, he said, I said, "Well, can we do this?" He goes, "Here's the solution." I said, "Well, can we do this?" And he said, "Well, it's going to take a little bit of work, because I'm not sure I can just go get one," you know, I mean, I would be happy if I could, but I'm not sure I can do all this for one house. That was the gist of it. And so what he, what he said was, but you know, there's, you can, you can do what you want out there in that public right-of-way, you can landscape it, you can fix it up, and if you want to pay for a sidewalk, we're, you know. So I got the impression, as long as we were willing to move forward with that, he was okay with it. But he wasn't going to commit to the city doing it, and so, you know, I kind of resolved the fact that I would be responsible for it.
Two things real quick, Mr. Smith. In my previous life, I was a civil engineer and designed a lot of subdivisions. The one comment the city has is the existing wall encroaches into the city right-of-way. It doesn't encroach much, but you don't have any problem with you taking your new wall and making sure it's set back from the property line two or three inches?
Not a problem.
Four or five inches, whatever it needs to be?
No, and frankly, Carmen and I should have caught that probably beforehand.
The other thing is, you know, based on what I'm hearing and everything I designed, and designed a lot of subdivisions, and paramount is safety. And you have a unique safety situation, because most new subdivisions, we don't have a situation where people are sleeping in your house. But every subdivision that was designed had sidewalks on both sides of the road. The ultimate solution for the city of Treasure Island would be have, it currently has a sidewalk on the west side of the road, which is part of the Pinellas Trail, actually, and bike path. Your point would be building a sidewalk from one end of your lot to the other end of the lot just to ultimately get sidewalks all the way to Publix. Is that correct? Ultimately, but you would only be responsible for your- Ultimately, but you would only be responsible for your, the area in front of your lot.
Yeah, and I, and I think I can-
Now, the, one more question.
I'm, I'm silent, yeah.
The, you know, the main thing, I mean, what we're considering here today is basically four points of a variance, but they're all interrelated and it's, it boils down to one thing from, to me, it's just a safety aspect. I mean, you, from what you've experienced over the last two years of construction, it appears you've, you've had several encounters.
Not threatening, I, I mean, now my wife might have thought they were threatening, but I, I was never threatened, but I've worked in New York for 20 years, I walked down the streets in Manhattan and that was just part, you know, you know, people ask you for money all the time, I didn't expect it in Treasure Island. So it is, it is a safety issue, no question.
Well, everybody who drives the streets of this city right now realizes it's not a huge problem, but we do have a little bit of problem and unfortunately where you chose to build your new house, it affects you. You know, where my next door neighbor who's building a house is very security conscious, but he doesn't, it's a matter of location. All right, just wanted to make those two points.
And just one point I might make to your, your security question, at one of the TI focus meetings, one of the, one of the participants, a local businessman presented what was going on with the homelessness, just in this little area, you know, a couple hotels, the Allied Building, Publix, Golf Park and the Walgreens, 443 homeless cases in two years where the police have been called to come in to deal with a homeless issue. That's a lot for Treasure Island. And that's, that's not even, that's not even the old McDonald's where if you go back a couple of years, there's a, there's a, Diane's been to, she's been to McDonald's, but you know-
Miss it every day.
But, but yeah, we're just zeroing in on like a little square block area, 400-
Well, they've moved down to Sharpies now.
They've left McDonald's?
Well, we're, some of them that were at McDonald's and Brett's is now down at the Waffle House and then Sharpies.
Okay, well, we sure didn't pull any cases that far down, but just in the immediate area, you know, that's, that's a lot of cases for a Treasure Island.
Anyway, go ahead Ross.
Um, just wrote, so, I mean, there's a couple, I know that we're going to have a board discussion. Buzzy Barnett is the neighbor when you're looking at the property to the left, so it'd be like, kind of like your north side basically, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just wanted to clarify that. Richard, in regards to the crosswalk situation, so this, this project is at 153, 149 and 145 are the two buildings to the right of it when looking at it. They would technically have access to that sidewalk that leads them to the nearest crosswalk on the north hand side. There's one property, 141, that does not have sidewalk, it's just a permanent drive. So in regards to the applicant putting in a sidewalk, it's technically not to get from one, from his north side of the property or other residents going north side all the way to Publix, they would have to cross using the crosswalk then walk down to the park. The, because the other crosswalk is in front of 129 and I think that, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, but 129 is the big, probably one of the bigger buildings that consumes the most units, they have that crosswalk directly across from their entranceway. So I kind of wanted to make that in regards to, this sidewalk would really be beneficial for 153, obviously, but 149 and 145 in regards to getting to Publix, they would just have to use the crosswalk, go down to the park and then cross over again, obviously, 104th to get there. And I think that that was something that was not addressed, but from a safety perspective, all of those people that live in all those units, including the Smith family, including the Barnett, that crosswalk would be more easy of an access point to that. Was DO, in regards to the, the Public Works for that beautification, does FDOT have to get involved at all?
No, it's state, it's not a state road, it's a city road.
Okay, so, I mean, the curbing is something, I know that you had said something about a curb.
Could if, if you-
You know, and, and my feedback for Public Works would be if, if the board does grant this applicant the request, I think that that would go a long way in regards to talking to Public Works about their feedback on, you know, pursuing the improvement.
My question didn't get answered by staff, does it go on to the city commission or to the right of way use permits or only Public Works?
It's just Public Works.
So that should be an easy, so to be very clear, and that's why I wanted the applicant to understand, we're not voting on the sidewalk or the right of way improvements today, none of that. The only reason you're here is a variance to the height of the fence and the wall being requested. So what, the former mayor told you, I love Larry, he's in Rotary with me, but often elected officials, sometimes it's process gets in the way. So I'm sure Public Works is going to be very happy with the improvements. The water sits there, it's great that you're addressing the stormwater, it's great that you're putting the sidewalk and taking care of the parking issue there, but, but just so we're all clear, that's not something that P&amp;Z is all dealing with today.
But it, it's hard from my perspective, it's hard for me to separate the two hardships, you know, and it's, it's kind of the comprehensive package, so yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you, we can absolutely go to, go to the Publix Works and move it, move it that way, no problem.
And, and just, Mr. Chairman, about a year ago, you jumped to me when I did a variance where the hardships weren't very well defined and, you know, there is no hardship again for homeless in that sense, it's, it's a security system and, you know, enlarged off on the other side of the wall, but it's okay.
Well, the one point-
A comment for Richard, I'm sorry.
The one point I'd like to make is we, part of the construction of the new Central Avenue Bridge, the Treasure Island Causeway, where the state or whoever did it required that a little remnant of the bridge be built in our park and it was nicely put in and it looks pretty good. And after about two or three years, the city staff, Public Works Department had barricaded underneath it because we had a situation where people were living underneath it, typically living under the bridge. And, but the trouble is, that's right across the street from Mr. Smith's house and the point is, and what Mr. Smith is trying to make and what I was agreeing with is his hardship is one thing and one thing only in regard to this variance and it's just security. You know, it's safety of his family and security. Okay, based on that, anybody else got any other questions or can we go ahead and have the city staff? Go ahead.
This, this question may be for the staff, but to point out the improvements are comprehensive and a lot on the tape, but should you do some research as to any variances that were provided at that level of fence that was allowed there? Maybe this goes to staff then, that's a different, that's a multi-family property, it's a different variance.
Fence regulations are actually the same no matter the use of the property, yes.
So is that property compliant with some areas? I don't know, it's a question.
I do not know, I could look it up, but I don't have that answer right now.
And Christopher, I would assume from Mr. Smith's presentation, when he does the pictures and it's beautiful, proposed project will replicate except for the height of the fence. So it looks like on page six, if you look at the height of that fence that was installed, it-
That one is, that one on 108 is six feet.
108, yeah.
And we only want our, we want our post by-
I'm just assuming that, but excellent question.
So the one on 108, so it's six, higher than what we're giving, I'm pretty sure it's a, but-
That's, that's correct.
Okay, Mr. Smith, if you would have a seat, Jamie, go ahead with your presentation.
Can I give you, show you one other thing?
Sure.
It's the last thing in the package that I left with you. And I, again, I had no research, just saw this, this is, this is parrot, this is some friends of mine's house actually, it's Paradise Lane, 8 Paradise Lane. They have a, they have a wall in front of their 15 feet back, they have a wall that is four foot three inches, not four foot six, four foot three and it's a solid wall and they have posts on their property that are five foot two, mine, mine request is five three and the difference is strictly the architectural design of the caps. And I, you know, know nothing about this property except it's, it looks good and you can see the landscaping in front of it and it's 15 feet from the wall, water, or from the road.
Thank you. Go ahead Jamie, we're not going to let you go yet.
This is a variance request to increase the maximum height of a fence wall located, located within a front yard to repair and expand upon an existing non-conforming wall at 153 104th Avenue. This property is located in the RFM 30 zoning district. There were two existing one-story apartments and a swimming pool on the subject lot that were demolished in 2019. A building permit for a new single-family dwelling was issued on March 18th of 2020. Construction of the home is nearing completion. There is an existing wall structure that was not demolished with the apartment buildings in 2019. As a whole, the wall structure is currently non-conforming as it exceeds the maximum height of a fence slash wall located within a front yard of 36 inches high. The required front yard extends 15 feet back from the front property line. The posts are approximately five feet high with a four foot high side wall on each side. The northwest portion of the wall slightly encroaches into the city's right of way. The applicant is currently requesting a variance to increase the maximum height to repair and expand upon the existing wall. Per the hardship narrative in the proposed site plan, the applicant would like to complete the following. Phase one is to replace the existing variable height front wall with a uniform curb that is 18 inches in height across the front of the property and extend the existing side walls four feet high so they connect with the new privacy walls on each side of the property. Phase two is to add the following across the front of the property. Two additional posts at five feet three inches high, a picket style fence which is three feet high on top of the 18 inches and a pedestrian gate which is four and a half feet high. Phase three is to clean up the existing public right of way immediately in front of the property by adding landscaping, sidewalk and grass. The proposed additions to the existing non-conforming wall would require the following variances by the Planning and Zoning Board. One, to increase the maximum height of a fence located within a front yard by one foot from three feet to four feet high to connect the existing sidewalls to the new privacy fence in the side yards. Two, to increase the maximum height of a fence located within a front yard by two feet three inches from three feet high to five feet three inches high for the addition of two new wall posts. Three, to increase the maximum height of a fence located within a front yard by one feet six inches from three feet to four feet six inches for the addition of a picket style fence between the existing and new wall posts. And four, to increase the maximum height of a fence located within a front yard by one feet six inches from three feet to four feet six inches for the addition, addition of a pedestrian walk gate. Phase three of the project, which includes landscaping, a new sidewalk and grass in the public right of way would require review and approval by the city's Public Works Department and is not included as part of the specific variance request as, as it is not within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Board. The applicant attended the required pre-application meeting at the Development Review Committee on November 9th, 2021 and had addressed all comments provided by staff at that time. I have included the relevant codes that pertain to fences and the setbacks for this property. The criteria for reviewing a variance for approval or denial is contained in section 70 dash 221 of the City of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances. The full analysis is included in your staff report, so I will just touch on the main points. One, the variance is in fact a variance as set forth within the land development regulations and within the province of the board and the specific variance being requested is set forth within the city's land development regulations and under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Board. Two, special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the building, structure or land for which the variance is sought and do not apply generally to building, structures or lands in the same district. The subject lot exceeds the minimum size standards for a single-family lot in this zoning district. The existing wall is non-conforming and partially encroaches into the city's right of way on the northern side of the lot. The applicant states in their narrative that a hardship exists due to the current parking situation in the right of way. Because the parking situation occurs in the right of way and not on private property, it would not be resolved with the granting of this variance. The applicant also contends that trespassing is a hardship. Trespassing is a police issue rather than a zoning issue and is not unique to this specific parcel. Three, strict application of the provisions of the land development regulations would not permit the applicant reasonable use of the building, structure or land. The application of the land development regulations regarding fence height would not prevent the applicant reasonable use of their land or the newly constructed single-family The variance proposed to be granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the building, structure or land. It has not been demonstrated that proposed, that the proposed variance is the minimum variance that would make possible the reasonable use of the building or land. There is an existing non-conforming wall that could be repaired rather than enlarged upon or a fence up to three feet in height is permitted without a variance within the front yard. The proposed fence could also be set back behind the 15 foot front yard setback. The granting of the proposed variance would not appear to be injurious to the neighborhood based on the current character. It would also be, appear to be an improvement to the existing architectural features of the existing wall and it would not appear to negatively impact the neighborhood character of the existing residential neighborhood. Based on these criteria, staff is recommending the variance request be denied based on the following. The existing wall encroaches into the city's right of way. There are no special conditions or circumstances that exist which are peculiar to the building, structure or land itself. A literal enforcement of the code does not prevent the applicant reasonable use of the land or the newly constructed single-family residence and the requested variance does not appear to be the minimum variance that would make reasonable use of the land.
Any questions of the city staff?
Uh, could you just review with us again the criteria for variance? And I assume that would be either JBR, city attorney? Hardship.
So as Jamie outlined in her staff report, there are several criteria in determining a hardship as provided by the city's code specifically in section 70 dash 221 of the city's code, there are eight criteria. The first one is whether the variance is in fact a variance set forth within the land development regulations and within the province of this board. The second one is whether there are special conditions or circumstances that exist which are peculiar to the, or, yeah, peculiar to the building, structure or land for which the variance is sought and do not generally apply to the buildings or structures or lands in the same district. The third criteria is whether or not the strict application of the provisions would not permit reasonable use of the building, structure or land. Whether the fourth one is whether particular conditions or circumstances existing are the result of the actions of the applicant. Whether the variant, the fifth one is whether the variance proposed to be granted is the minimum variance that would make reasonable use of the building, structure or land. Sixth is whether there are special conditions such that a literal enforcement would result in an unnecessary hardship and there are certain special conditions that are enumerated to be considered there. One point that I'll also add to that is in considering an unnecessary hardship, you asked specifically about that, the courts have determined that an unnecessary hardship is defined as a non-self-created characteristic of the property which renders it virtually impossible to use the land for the purpose or in the manner in which it is zoned. It cannot, hardship cannot be found unless there's a showing that under the present zoning, no reasonable use can be made of the property. The seventh criteria is that granting of a variance will be in harmony with the general intent or purpose of the chapter and the eighth is that it will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. You're welcome.
Any other questions of city staff?
Jamie, in regards, I guess it's not, well, because the applicant brought up that fence that's on Causeway, para, excuse me, Paradise Lane, I think it's six, eight Paradise Lane, but the, in the exhibit, I don't think it's labeled in exhibit for the last two pages. I mean, that's, that's allowed on that street, I guess, that wall that's considered a fence?
From what I understand, that fence is built to the setback line.
Okay, all right.
I believe so, can you pull up? Eight Paradise, Eight Paradise Lane?
Okay. No, it's fine.
Yeah, because if you go to the setback line, which of course is different in every neighborhood in the city, you can build up to a seven foot high fence.
Understood. Do you know what, when, I mean, I was looking in the packet for it, I know when we figured out when the, this particular project was getting demolished, do we know when that fence that's currently residing there was built? What year?
I do not personally know, but I believe they say it was built with the original construction. We didn't have a permit on file for that, so I'm sure it was a while back.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we have, any other questions?
I don't have any questions from the staff.
Yes, this one's more for staff and when we passed our new watershed policy which gets us into our drainage and that type of thing, do you know offhand if Public Works is even looking at some of that for the floodwaters? Because we were talking about, before we adopted that, we were talking about the drainage dishes that most of us that were over in rural North Forty are very familiar with county- are very familiar with county rain and water flow ditches. But that was one of our ways that we were going to try. That is one possible way that the city can try to handle our water on the roads and that type of thing for future use. And I know this was us going out fifty to a hundred years almost. But I would be wondering also, and I know that's not part of this, but I'm trying to look at, would that not be something that would be premature on Mr. Smith's plate at this point? And number two, with us going through our land development or working towards getting to our land development, because we're working on our comprehensive plan, that the city staff brings in, let's say, Chief Barkley to give us information on how we've got new growing concerns over trespassing. And I'm just going to put it as trespassing. And the reason why I'm saying that is that I would wonder if the city and us being part of that planning, should we be addressing some of these issues that Mr. Smith has brought up about his property? It could be happening on a lot of other properties. And if those things are even in any of our spreadsheets that we have been asking to build when different things come up, that maybe we can address them during our comprehensive planning process that we're going through right now and then into our LPAs. That has nothing to do with this case. I'm just wanting to know, have we started thinking along those ways? Because I think we should, because I think this could become a bigger problem for everybody. He's in a unique place. But, you know, otherwise, I don't know how we're going to resolve some of our problems, but we're going to have to do it from a comprehensive plan on down, I believe.
We'll take that suggestion, and I'll also add the fence question to our LDR review log that we're building of all the questions that have come up like that. But that's a good, bigger subject for one of our workshops is that question of safety or defensive design or...
Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of the watershed management plan question, I would imagine when he begins discussion with Public Works and looking into actually getting started on that project, if it would be something that they're planning on doing in the future, they would let him know. I don't know the specifics of their...
Right. But I mean, I think he's brought very good issues forward. And no matter how we vote, those are things that we should be thinking about in our comprehensive plan and on down.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one card from... Okay.
So the setbacks are measured from the property line. Doesn't matter what the size of the right-of-way is. So wherever his property line is, fifteen feet back from there would be his front yard. So anything set behind that fifteen-foot line from his front property line is considered the side yard. It's no longer the front yard.
Yeah, that condo project was built about twelve years ago. And I think that there's probably no one on this board and no one who works for the city that was involved in that project. It just happens to be across the water from a friend of mine.
And it may well have been a PUD. And a PUD is, you know... I don't know, it might have been a PUD.
A PD?
I don't know, wasn't here, don't know.
PU D?
Yeah.
We don't have those.
Okay.
We've never had those. Never had those in the City of Treasure Island, so it most likely had a variance.
Jamie, if this did go through, would the property that's to the north, I think it's Mr. or Mrs. Buzzard, would they have to come in for a variance as well to put in a fence?
If they wish to exceed the maximum height in a front yard, they would also need to obtain their own variance.
Because technically, their fence today is conforming, if I recall. That doesn't matter, but I mean, if they want to build out on the same type of line or, you know, to make it...
And Chris, I just wanted to add to your comment. I don't know what your intention was behind the question, but even if that property did have a variance over on one hundred and eighth, we do have something in our code that states that since each application is considered based upon the unique circumstances presented by such application, prior decisions of the board or commission shall not constitute grounds for the granting of any variance. Yeah, I just didn't know where you were coming from, so I wanted to add that. Okay.
And just one other thing, just for you, Chris, since you're kind of new to us and stuff. We have, because I believe, have we not been, the city has been sued because of variances that we have given. So we have taken a much harder line on variances because of that. So it is very frustrating to look and see how nice it looks on one hundred and eighth, how nice this looks, and to help him out and stuff. But it's almost like legally we've got our hands tied unless we make some drastic changes.
Well, to clarify that. To clarify that, that's only happened once in my eight-year term, once.
Reembore discussion?
I don't think he's, I know you've gotten to that point yet. I think there was, this was questions, but it kind of evolved to...
Yeah, no, I don't want to step ahead of the chair, so go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Anyway, we've got one card, if everybody else is ready to go.
Echo Diane's point, you know, when we start looking at the LDRs. I mean, it's, my first condo and I saw a gorgeous house going up, and one is, you know, is basically resort facilities, land use with our in thirty zoning. Man, they're pioneers for sure. I mean, that area is definitely, you were cleaning it up, no doubt about it. But, you know, maybe we look at echoing Diane's comments, whether the heights that we currently have for fencing within some of these zoning districts are appropriate. Is three feet high enough is the question, rather than trying to wrap a variance around a nonexisting hardship. That's all I can say.
Okay. Anybody else got any other questions?
Not for staff.
Okay. We got one card from Carmen Peachey. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Peachey? Anybody else? Well, go ahead.
My name's Carmen Peachey. I reside at one zero one one eight Tarpon Drive in Treasure Island. Obviously, I'm the contractor for Greg Smith, and I can confirm all his statements here about the homeless people. It is definitely an issue there on his property. We did have to chase a squatter out that, we weren't sure whose vehicle it was that was out in front of the property for a few days. It ended up being a homeless woman that was there. She would leave during the day, so we couldn't find her to ask her to, you know, move off the property. So yeah, that's, you know, definitely an issue. The nonconforming wall that's there today, you know, it's not an issue to move it back the six inches or whatever to make it conforming. If we abide by the current setbacks and move the wall even fifteen foot farther, I think it creates even a bigger problem here that I know Mr. Smith here addressed with the parking in the front of his lot there. It makes it extremely difficult, and I've been working there now for two years, to pull out of his driveway, okay, when people are parked in the right-of-way. This is the way it goes down there. The subcontractors that pull on the job site first, on every one of my job sites, want to park the closest to the house so they don't have to move their tools very far. On Greg's job, they all want to park on the right-of-way because they can't pull out of the driveway because they can't see when the trucks are parked on the street. I don't park on the job site. It's my job site, I don't park there. I park down the street with a friend of mine, you know, that owns a piece of property, allows me to park because when there's cars parked out there, you cannot see to pull out of the driveway. It's a very big problem. The road there, I know, is a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. There's plenty of speeders, okay, that go through there at forty, forty-five miles an hour. Like I said, it's a danger there for Mr. Smith when he lives there. There is going to be an accident there one day, unfortunately, and I'd hate to see that. But, I mean, that's really all I had to say. Just by, based on my experience being there for, you know, two years, I see that being quite an issue, you know, moving forward. If we move the wall back to a compliant setback, I think you just are opening up to even more parking in his front yard. You know, and I don't think that's a good situation for anybody, so...
Good, thank you, Mr. Peachey. Greg, Mr. Smith, do you have any other comments?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody.
At the podium, if you would.
I would just like to say thank you to the board for hearing me out. We're excited about coming here, and I do think the one point I would leave with you is, if you drive down that street and that wall's an extra foot high versus what it is now, it's irrelevant. It's nobody, in fact, all it does is beautify things in the park when they're walking by it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of either the applicant or the city staff? We'll get them both covered. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Smith and I have both attended the Treasure Island Focus Group and got to hear Chief Barkley discuss the problems that he has currently. And Mr. Barkley's approach is different from what it used to be years ago. It's a much kinder, gentler policing effort, and unfortunately, there's only so much they can do. And my wife was walking down from Publix to Walgreens, for instance, and would not make that walk because of the situation. You know, the situation is, is I do think that Mr. Smith has a hardship that affects his property because in the city that is as valuable as Treasure Island and our property value is as high as they are, we all want to be in a situation where, when we get out of our car at night, we don't have to look over our shoulder ten times. And it's unfortunate, but it exists in this location. Main reason, you know, I was looking in this area as part of the focus group, and the old bridge came right to mind, and I said, "Well, there's a great place for you to sleep at night." And you realize it's all barricaded off under there, like I said earlier. So for that standpoint, I truly do think that Mr. Smith has a hardship in his property, and it boils down to one thing and one thing only, and it's safety. You know, we don't want to have any family in Treasure Island having to react to a situation by calling the police when in a situation we can put up a discouraging higher wall that would basically prevent any encroachment and trespass onto a piece of property. So based on that, I support this variance. Any other comments?
I mean, I had a couple of comments in regards to it. I know that initially the word was security, and then Richard just said safety. I do think that it's both of them, security and safety. Not only for the applicant, but also for additional residents. The homeless issue, I understand, is something that the city is working on, but it has definitely increased per the facts or the details that were provided over the past two years. I mean, growing up here as a kid my entire life, I definitely see changes in regards to that impacting our community. And like I said, security and safety, not only for the applicant, but also for us as well as other residents. During standing ovations, I almost got crushed on my bike because of those cars that are parked out in front. Not only standing ovations, but maybe the week after, when it wasn't technically standing ovations, but still the parking was there. Yeah, revenue from parking is definitely something that the city is missing out on. And of course, as everyone knows, I'm a big, trying to generate revenue for the City of Treasure Island. But the traffic in regards to that type of, that specific area is an issue. I do think that what the applicant is requesting is something that I will be on board. It's been there for sixty years, that current structure that's there. I understand that getting it conforming off the city property, that's something that needs to be addressed. And I think that a big highlight is making it look better as well. So that was my feedback in regards to, you know, this particular application.
Thank you. Any other comments, Diane?
Yes, I have a comment. As much as I can sympathize with what you, Mr. Chairman, have said and Ross has said, and the case that Mr. Smith has presented, and I see some of the stuff happening closer to my house also. But you need, I think we need to be looking at this, not on what our feelings are, but what the code and everything else is. We have had other problems and other fencing issues come up, and one thing that I want to be is to be consistent on things. I would almost rather us defer this case and see what other solutions can possibly come about it. Or like I had said before, get this into our LDRs and stuff based on what the current philosophy is of policing because I've always been told if somebody's on your property, you can call the police and you can ask them to be removed, and they can be charged with trespassing. So is that the easy way or the way you want to go? No. But I really, I sympathize. I really do. I mean, if you try to pull out a first street on Isle of Palms at one hundred and twelfth, there's bushes that sit right up against the sidewalk. And me being a short driver, I got to get, if I go that direction, I have to put my nose out there, and I'm going to get creamed because, once again, they're doing forty-five instead of, well, mine's twenty instead of twenty-five. So, I mean, we've all got these things. And as much as I sympathize and I love the looks of these, I wish I could do it at my own house some days just because of the pets, because they don't have the same thing as the dogs. But anyway, I really think we need to, as much as we want to have heart, we're not here for heart. We're here for enforcing the laws and the regulations and stuff that are before us.
I understand that the applicant is coming to us from their point of view, pulling out of their driveway. I am also thinking about every one of us that go to Publix that are leaving to go that way, regardless if it's the applicant or the neighbor or anyone in those condos with those cars that are parked there. I'm thinking about everybody that could be impacted by the applicant leaving, not just the applicant's view of people coming towards their driveway. That's, I just wanted to share my thought process on it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very confused again. There's nothing in this application that P&amp;Z is voting on today that's related to parking or progress or use of the right-of-way. The only question on our plate is whether we go with additional height of a fence. The applicant has already stated he's happy to move the new fence out of the city's right-of-way, so I didn't see that as a problem. And Mr. Chairman, if you could show me on this list of items that are required for variance where homeless is...
I'm not talking about homeless whatsoever. I'm talking about safety.
I don't see it...
Safety and security.
...of a variance. And I think it relates back to what Diane was saying earlier. If we need to look at the LDRs on the height of fencing within this particular area, which I believe you'll be the only single-family home in that stretch. I could be wrong, but I drive it a lot, and it seems like you're going to be the only one in there. But I think the safety...
Oh, Greg.
I would just say, the safety of an applicant, you have a security system, whatever's required for the safety of a home. Obviously, the home has been under construction, so I understand that you could have had a problem with people coming in. That's very unfortunate, and it shouldn't happen to you at all. And we do sympathize with you, and we do want to have the heart there. We do want you to feel safe because you have done a great service to the city in terms of putting that beautiful home on that wasn't very pretty spot earlier. But again, I don't see anything here on this list of requirements for variance, safety of an applicant, where a... of an applicant, where a security system will provide the same safety as a higher fence is in this in terms of a variance, consideration of a variance. I just don't see it. And Mr. Chairman, you put me on the spot a year ago when I, when I went to go for something like this. I'm just putting you on the same spot, that's all.
That's fine.
So that's fine. You asked me why, you asked me to explain my vote.
That, no, that's absolutely fine. We'll have to discuss the, the spot. My memory is bad. Now, the one thing I will do is our next Treasure Island Focus Group Board meeting is January 25th. The last two have been most interesting, because Chief Barkley has been there, and all I can say is, it's not the old days. Even Chief Barkley stated that he can't arrest anybody anymore. Anytime they tried to arrest people, they'd take them up to 49th Street, they'd be back here in the afternoon. So what we're talking about here is not so much the fact that, whether it's in the code or not, we're addressing a situation and it boils down to strictly one thing and one thing only, and it's the height of that fence for safety and security. Like I said before, I have met Mr. Smith previously at the focus board meetings, and I was quite frankly rather flabbergasted with the city police department's approach. It is a kinder, gentler, community of policing approach. Unfortunately, when somebody's costing you for money in your front yard, doesn't do you a heck of a lot of good. I think a small height increase to provide a little bit of security for one of our citizens is something that isn't gonna hurt a thing. And the situation was, is worst case, something bad happened, I would hate to be sitting on this board and said I voted against it because it was against the rules. The situation is, is that's why we have this board. You know, if we're just gonna follow the rules all the time, we can all stay home. So I will continue to voice my support for this small, what I consider a small variance. Any other comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion based on the staff recommendation to deny the variance request.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny. If you vote no, you're voting basically to, against the denial. If it goes down in defeat, we'll re-present. Do we have a roll call?
Pam Bencassio?
Yes.
Diana Craybill?
Yes.
Linda Driscoll?
Yes.
Chris Downing?
Yes.
Ross Sanchez?
No.
Michael Herdibees?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
No.
The motion to deny passes.
You are denied. We will move on to our next case. Case number 9B, site dash 000181 dash 202110771 Gulf Boulevard, site plan request to allow a temporary parking lot for a period not to exceed one year. This is the old McDonald's site, and if the applicant could approach the podium and make your presentation.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Hastier. My address is 3032 Northeast 32nd Avenue, Suite 326, Fort Lauderdale, 33308. Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for having me today, and thank you for the good weather on the trip up here. Ask to Parking, that I work, the company I work for, is a parking management and valet company. We started business back in 1989 in Fort Lauderdale at a couple of small restaurants, and have built a fairly good-sized business in the Palm Beach, Broward, and Dade County areas. We have, in the last 10 years, expanded to paid parking lots, whether we own them, manage them, or have lease agreements with the property owners. And those properties now include the three counties I mentioned. We have six lots in City of Key West, two in St. Augustine in the Historic District, 15 in Tallahassee, two in Atlanta, and two in St. John's Newfoundland. The, the property owner in this case, Mr. Galad Ovakinen, if I'm saying that properly, owns the surf style there on the corner, and the building in the, in the parking lot, and we, we manage a parking lot for his landlord in Fort Lauderdale, which is a very busy area right on A1A and La Solas Boulevard. He saw the potential revenue income and how well the parking lot was managed through, you know, through having personnel coming there and having some instructions in the lot and not just letting people park in a parking lot as a free-for-all. It's our intention here to do the necessary things that staff recommends. I'm sorry, Mr. Pulasko couldn't be here today, the architect, but I see no problem with him putting the impervious surface ratio onto the plan. I'm sure it's less than 50%, nowhere near the, nowhere near 90, that was the concern. So that would exclude having to get a South Florida Water Management District permit. We intend to pull a building permit to stripe and put down concrete or hard, what's the word, a polymer parking stops in the 10 new spaces on the dirt part of the lot that exists now. There are already 28 existing parking spaces that were there for the pizza place and the McDonald's. Those would remain, and we would put an additional 10 spaces nose-to-nose with those cars that would have been parked, if you can picture that by looking at the site plan, nose in towards the McDonald's building. We operate these parking lots with a pay meter. There's no electric required, they're completely self-contained, they are solar-powered, the solar panel powers some 12-volt batteries inside the machine, and those machines run on the low voltage. They communicate with a international network by cellular signal. We currently have almost 200 of those in operation in the different areas that I mentioned to you before. Again, it's, it's gonna be a short term, this is one year or less. I know that the, Mr. Ovakinen plans on doing development on that parcel, and this is just a way to manage the cars on the property that are parking there for free on the weekends now. It'll help him with a little bit of revenue income, and that's how we plan to move ahead with this. I guess I could keep talking and talking, but let me just answer any questions that you might have about this project would probably be more beneficial.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from the board? Yes, Pam?
I had a couple, you might have already answered them. The staff report speaks to amendments that need to be made to the site plan. The aisle width between the stalls code requires 24 feet. The ingress egress onto Gulf Boulevard was not correct, and you talked about the impervious surface ratio, and then the, I'm sure you'll follow the code on the surface material, but did I, did you address the other two items that were in the staff report that did not meet the city code on the plan?
I did not, and we will have Mr. Pulisco, Alex Pulisco, who's the architect for this project, address those as part of the conditions if we are approved.
Yep, that's, that was my thought too, and obviously, staff would not approve your, your building permit if it didn't meet the city.
Yeah, and, and when I say building permit, that's basically a restriping permit, because all is we're going to do is put in those parking stops in front of the already 10 existing on the pavement.
So on the area where the McDonald's was located, you're just gonna grade it and leave it as dirt?
It's already fairly.
Diane and I would like that, because it's better for stormwater, but is that what you're gonna?
Yes, it's already fairly well graded and compacted. I've, I've been here a few times, come up from Fort Lauderdale, looked at the site, and I think just putting the parking stops in place, we can throw some spray paint down as part of the paving permit application would probably want us to do, but I don't think the paint's going to last on the dirt, whether it was dirt, gravel, or what have you. We do have a number of pervious parking lots, especially down in Hollywood Beach, where they've got such a problem with king tides and so much water, that we, we try to keep the whole lot pervious, and there are no stripes designating parking spaces on those pervious areas, we just use the parking stops.
I've got a question, maybe it's you or staff. I've had a lot of issues in the past with folks when we, my cities have approved a lot of the temporary uses, again, of the property for parking when it's high in demand, but it instantly gets out of compliance. The landscaping dies, they don't do irrigation, you know, they don't police it, that, that, I don't mean safety-wise, but I've had a lot of problems with non-compliance that becomes code enforcement issues. So I'd just say that to Jamie to make sure that this doesn't happen. It's a prime lot, prime entry to the city. I think a bigger discussion for this table, I'm gonna bring it up when we get into our comments, is there were a lot of comments made at the visioning sessions on this property, and why the project that was proposed hadn't moved forward, and as Diane said earlier, is an issue for our codes. You know, why can't we get the redevelopment? Why do we have to have a prime site become a temporary parking lot? But that's irrelevant to your request, and you answered my questions on meeting the code, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, if you would have a seat, and Jamie, if you would give the city's presentation.
May I just add one short thing? We, we as, we at the company take great pride in keeping our parking lots well-maintained. If they're very, very busy, we have them cleaned five times a week. Most of our properties are three times a week, early in the morning from whatever is left over from the night before. And there isn't really any landscaping to maintain there, any landscaping up against the building, that's, that's part of the property owner. But we will keep our parking lots cleaned, and I would also mention that you may, you haven't asked me this, but I'll go ahead and throw it out there, enforcement, how do we intend to enforce this? And what we do is have manual enforcement with somebody coming by, and they do a parking notice which is similar to a city ticket. It's a kinder, gentler way than, than towing or booting. That's a big inconvenience, and it's very expensive. Parking notice, say, for example, $58, and we intend to install cameras at the Gulf Boulevard and the alley entrance and exit, which are license plate recognition. We have these all over the country, and it just basically takes a picture of the license plate coming in. The customer doesn't pay, or they stay over the extended time that they paid for, they will get a parking notice in the mail.
If you haven't selected a system yet, look at Park Council. One of the things that came up in our visioning session on Saturday, the two private lots here have gone with another vendor.
We have our own.
The city is currently using in their lots, and people are coming in, and the residents are very confused. They actually thought that the city was maintaining the parking at one of his commercial parking, the area there.
When it was in infancy, we had those similar problems, and we've learned quite a few things on how to address those, and it's increased the speed of the learning curve.
Yeah, it, it really does. It's just that the other two lots that are private, and we can't regulate that, but being on a, being on a system that's not, a system that most people are using, using is, in the area, is difficult.
Thank you.
Ready for me? Okay. This is a site plan request to allow a temporary parking lot for a period not to exceed one year for the property located at 10771 Gulf Boulevard. The property is located in the PRMU Core, which is the Downtown Redevelopment Zoning District. The subject property consists of one corner parcel located adjacent to Gulf Boulevard and 108th Avenue. The lot is currently vacant. The site previously consisted of a restaurant with drive-through facilities, which was demolished in 2019. The Planning and Zoning Board approved a site plan with conditions on June 18th, 2020, for a new mixed-use development consisting of Starbucks and a retail store on the first floor, and two residential dwelling units on the second floor. The applicant had applied for a building permit, but withdrew the permit application on June 7th, 2021. The applicant is currently requesting site plan approval of a temporary parking lot not to exceed one year. The parking lot includes a total of 36 standard parking spaces and two ADA-accessible parking spaces. There are 28 existing paved spaces, which include 26 standard and two ADA from the previous development. There are 10 additional pervious parking spaces proposed. The applicant attended a required pre-application conference at the Development Review Committee meeting on November 9th, 2021. I included the relevant Code of Ordinances regarding temporary parking lots and the different criteria, and the criteria for reviewing a site plan for, a site plan for approval or denial is contained in the Land Development Regulations, Section 70-92. The subject site is located in the PRMU Core Zoning District. A parking lot is a permitted use within this zoning district. The proposed site plan request for an, for an off-street temporary parking lot is in conformance with the applicable regulations of the zoning district with the following exceptions. One, the existing aisle width between the stalls on the east, south, and west sides of the parking lot do not appear to meet the minimum of 24 feet. These dimensions were not provided on the proposed site plan, but staff conducted a site visit on December 2nd to obtain the approximate measurements. The existing two-way ingress egress drive onto Gulf Boulevard does not meet the minimum requirement of 24 feet wide, and the impervious surface ratio was not provided. Section 68-486M2 allows for a possible reduction or relaxation of specific land development requirements such as paving surface, buffering, and landscaping for vehicular use areas as may be applicable for temporary parking lots with a duration of 90 days to one year. There was no proposed landscaping associated with the site plan, so if you did want them to have to adhere to those specific landscaping requirements or not to, I would include that as a condition of your approval if you wish to approve the site plan. A parking lot is compatible with the surrounding commercial development, it does not abut a residential neighborhood. As I had mentioned, the existing two-way ingress and egress onto Gulf Boulevard does not meet the current minimum. There's also an existing two-way ingress egress onto the rear alleyway. The existing parking spaces do not meet the minimum requirements for aisle width between stalls on the east, south, and west sides. Vehicular use areas are required to meet the landscaping standards set forth in Section 72-39 of the Code of Ordinances. Buffering is not required as the proposed development is compatible with the adjacent commercial development. There are no existing trees on site, and as I mentioned, temporary parking lots for 90 days to one year can have relaxation to those standards. The proposed site plan does not include the construction of any buildings, it does not provide access to or an, or abut an existing public beach or waterfront, there are no known historically or architecturally significant structures on the site, and the proposed site plan does not include any on-site recreation areas or lands to be dedicated for public recreational purposes. If the impervious surface ratio is increased on the site, the proposed site plan will require a permit or exemption from the Southwest Florida Water Management District. If the aisle drive is required to be widened onto Gulf Boulevard, an FDOT permit will also be required. Staff is recommending that the proposed site plan be approved with the following conditions. One, any construction associated with this project shall be subject to the Florida Building Code, City of Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, Flood Plane Management Regulations, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code, and any other applicable regulations in effect at the time of permitting. Two, the impervious surface ratio must be provided on the site plan and cannot exceed the maximum allowed of 90% in this zoning district. Three, if the impervious, if the impervious, impervious surface ratio is increasing, the applicant must obtain a permit or exemption from SWIFTMUD. For the use of the temporary parking lot shall not exceed a period of one year from the date of approval by the Planning and Zoning Board. And I did want to change the fifth condition that I had in the staff report to say that number five, the existing cross-aisle drives, stall widths, stall lengths, and aisle width between the stalls be modified to meet the current code prior to the permitting process.
Okay, any questions of the city staff?
Jamie, after one year, so December 16th, 2022, let, you know, let's just say it gets approved today, I mean, can people park on this on December 17th next year, like the day after? the day after? I mean, how does this work?
The use for the temporary parking would not be allowed. The only way that they could be granted an extension after that one-year period is going to the city commission, and there's certain conditions they would have to follow. One would be no extension shall be granted for such parking which is not in compliance with the design standards, maintenance plan, or any conditions of the original approval. And two, included but not limited to any adverse impacts such as parking, changes in the land development regulations, crime statistics for the parking, and code violation history shall be considered in determining whether to grant an extension.
And extensions could be for one-year maxes, or?
One-year extensions, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can see this as a nightmare with just this parking constantly. What's the holdup on the building?
We've been, the architecture for the development has been in contact with our department. I know they, I understand they are looking to build a parking garage with retail on the first floor. But of course, getting plans and getting all those designs takes time. So as soon as they have proposals, they'll come in for a DRC meeting. I don't have any indication of when that will be.
I mean, basically, if the commission denies the extension, it's on the commission, it's not on us.
Correct.
I have a question for the applicant. Please. Thank you, sir. I have my, I have a concern that if, where, when, when and if you have to contact SWIFTMUD or FDOT, and the time response that takes for you to get responses and those items implemented, how much time are you going to have left for that parking lot then? I mean, I'm just trying to, I guess I'm playing devil's advocate here.
Good question, but with, with a lot of certainty, I can tell you that neither of those will be necessary. Because of the conditions laid out here, it talked about the percentage being ninety percent. We're looking at the plan, I'm going to say less than fifty percent, and that's not going to change. So southwest, I'm used to saying South Florida, Southwest Florida Water Management District will not require anything from us. And we are not going to change the ingress egress from the existing parking lot onto Gulf Boulevard. It's going to remain the same. So that leaves FDOT out of the picture as well.
Okay, because I know that underneath the other proposed plan, one of our delays that we had was that the FDOT was insisting with the Starbucks building and that, that needed to be widened there. And I guess I'm confused, or I'm not clear on why this isn't require, possibly not requiring it when it's required previously.
If I can provide a comment, so.
Sure.
Our code references that ingress egress as cross aisle drive, so I did mention that as one of the conditions, that it would need to be brought up to current code, which is an enlargement of like four inches, because it's at twenty-three feet and eight inches right now.
Four inches, taking the curbs out, putting in new curbs?
It would have to be twenty-four feet to meet the current code.
Okay. And that requires an FDOD permit?
Yes, it's a state road.
Welcome to Treasure Island.
That's a big monkey wrench you're carrying there.
Now, actually, having done probably two-hundred FDOT permits in my lifetime, you call up the FDOT, you say, I'm taking out the existing curb, and they should work with you in a matter of moments. They don't want to see your permit for four inches. They really don't.
Okay. Well, that being said, thank you. And we would certainly have to address this as one of the conditions.
In regards to the, because I know that some of the spots currently today, you said are for like the pizza joint or whatever surf style it's called. When you do take over management, if you were to do this, would all spots then be now metered so people that were going to that pizza joint would have to pay?
Within the area, I'm not.
Yeah, it's like.
I don't know which direction is which here.
It's right over here, over my back, right shoulder.
Okay, but behind the building, between there and 108th, from Gulf Boulevard to the alley?
Okay.
The answer to your question is yes. Those would be metered, and they would be have to be paid. Now, whether the landlord, in a lot of cases, they do, they make exceptions, or we have some type of reduced fee, monthly permit application for the tenants to park their managers and employees at reduced cost.
Okay. Not my fight, so.
One thing before you leave, let's get you out of working on a FDOT permit. The narrowest portion is twenty-three feet, eight and three-eighths inches, but that's within the limits of the property. Cut that southernmost curb out by four inches, and you're good to go. You don't have to mess with the DOT whatsoever.
Merry Christmas. From Richard Harris.
DOT used to take me for a. Speaking from experience.
We've had a few of ourselves.
There you go.
Very good. That's good information, and I thank you.
Richard, just to be on the safe side here, you're basing that on your past history. You are retired now. He may find out differently. So that's not saying that you're speaking for that on behalf of the city, are you?
I never speak on behalf of the city. I'm a volunteer. I'm speaking on behalf of Richard Harris, professional engineer.
Hey, I'm sorry I offended you.
There you go.
Jamie, if anything, when it comes to that site that is going to be constructed or planned for construction, does it come in front of P&amp;Z regardless of what it is?
If it's a permitted use, yes. I believe, let me see.
So whatever is going there, we end up seeing what's going to go there?
Yes, you saw the last one, so I don't know why this one would be any different. Let me see, let me just double check. Give me one second.
Okay, getting back on track. Any other comments or questions? If none, we will close the public hearing. Obviously, the current situation out there is a free-for-all, I support your project. I want to make sure you're open for business as quickly as possible. You said it yourself, you're not going to increase the impervious ratio. Like you said, you're about fifty. You don't want to go to the DOT. I just explained to that's a professional engineer how to do it. So all I can say is I support your project and hope you can get going quickly. With that, any other comments?
Watch out for the homeless.
Or would somebody like a motion, to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion in regards to case number Site 000181-2021. I have a motion to approve that case number and a site plan request allow a temporary parking lot not to exceed a period of one year with the conditions listed on our packet with a edit to number five according to Jamie's notes, which were regarding current code, said something about aisles and.
Yeah, the existing cross aisle drives, stall widths, stall lengths, and aisle width between stalls should be modified to meet current code prior to the permitting process.
Correct. That is my edit to number five in regards to approving the motion. I tried writing that down, but.
Thank you, Ross. Could I have a second, please? Okay. Motion by Ross Sanchez. I can almost read your name down there. That is second by Chris Downing. And we have a roll call loop.
Ken Ben-Grazio?
Yes.
Diana Cravell?
Yes.
Linda Driscoll?
Yes.
Chris Downing?
Yes.
Ross Sanchez?
Yes.
Michael Herdabees?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Pass.
Okay, that's our second case. Nobody's in the public that wants to talk any further. Go build your project after you get a building permit. Let's see, reports and comments of city attorneys, staff, and board members.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to touch base with you on the upcoming LPA schedule. As you all know, we have joint workshops with the city commission coming up on January 18th and February 1st, and an as-needed meeting on 210, which would be your normal LPA date. Those would be joint workshops. They're going to be, and Jen can elaborate on the procedures, but basically a formal public meeting with everybody.
At nighttime?
Yes, they're all at six o'clock. The two city commissioners are after the regularly scheduled agenda. And then the LPA would be at six o'clock time certain, if we have one on, on February 10th. Just wanted to also ask, we have a very heavy workload for the LPA in March and April, and I just wanted to confirm with you if we would have a regular workshop on 310. We would, and I'll send you all these dates.
Okay.
But then on 317, after the P&amp;Z, we would like to have a workshop if possible. And I'll send this out and confirm with everybody your availability, but this is, in order to get where we need to go to get the comp plan approved, we would just ask for that one extra meeting. And then we would be back on regular LPA date on 414, and a final recommendation on 512 to the city commission. So I'll send this all out to you. So the only additional meeting would be the one after the P&amp;Z on 317.
But on the joint, it was us joining them after their commission meetings for the first two, them joining us if the third one is necessary?
Right, yes.
All right.
And I'll confirm all that in an email, but I just wanted to ask your blessings on the additional meeting. Also wanted to let you know that on the January 13th LPA meeting, we are not going to have.
Okay.
We were going to bring you some of what we are calling the minor LDR amendments, which are not dependent on the comp plan, but some of those are still in review right now. So they'll probably come to you in February.
No LPA on January 13th?
That is correct.
I was just going to add, we're not having a January P&amp;Z either. No, we didn't receive anything in time, no.
Boy, you guys freed us up from two weeks.
Enjoy your vacation.
Yes, we gave you a vacation.
You gonna throw in free healthcare next, or what?
The question I have for Jim Cowan is, on the 18th, I guess we're having the joint meeting. I've been approached by several commissioners. They say, we consider the LPA the experts. Are we running the meeting?
So I think the way that it's actually going to work is more that the consultant is going to run the meeting. It's going to be a workshop, so it's a visioning session, much like the visioning session that happened with the public. The commission absolutely has stated that they view the LPA to be the expert on this, and they're just looking forward to being able to collaborate with the LPA on determining the vision for the city going forward in building the comprehensive plan. So I believe the same gentleman that led the visioning for the public will be here and will lead that. And instead of it being the public participation, this is all going to be focused on the LPA's vision and the commission's vision of the future of the city.
The, well, that was my next question. Thank God they're going to be here to present instead of trying to present over the TV.
Oh, no, it's not going to, it's going to be physically here. It's going to be the same gentleman who will.
We're confirming that right now.
Oh, we are?
But, yes.
That's good. He needs to spend some money and come here, so we can hear him.
Well, and it'll be, it'll be a, much like with the visioning session, there'll be discussion topic-led and questions asked, you know, thoughtful questions asked and solicited responses. So.
We're fine, Mr. Cowen. We all have our opinions. We're fine.
Yeah. So that's how we anticipate the visioning sessions to go. It may be that three aren't needed. It may be that the three are needed. It'll just depend on the kind of feedback. And the big purpose was to ensure that it was thoroughly flushed out with both boards, so that then, when you were brought these elements, the vision that has been discussed with the public, the vision, the visioning that then has occurred with both boards is shown in these elements for you all to consider, and in the goals and objectives in reaching that vision that has been determined. So that's, that's the overall hope. That's the overall process and plan for the 18th and the first. And it should be, the regular commission meeting will happen, and then it'll go into the joint workshop. So I can't give you an exact time on that, because I don't know how long the commission meeting will run. But I know that the goal was to try to keep those meetings as brief as we could, so that we could get the workshop started early for, you know, so you all weren't waiting too long, if that was possible.
Well, we have to do is mention tall buildings on the beach, and the meeting will go on for twenty days.
Yeah. And then.
That's a dead issue, by the way.
Jen, you had mentioned, and I just wanted to confirm with you, both, both the commission and the LPA will be called into session and will be recorded and everything like a normal meeting, so that will, both of them will be.
It will be a joint workshop, so you all will be free to discuss amongst yourselves everything that is going on. And the commission will have that same freedom, which, you know, as you know, if you attended the public sessions, you could watch, but you really couldn't participate because we didn't have those advertised as public meetings for this board and public meetings for the commission. So this will give you that opportunity. So, and that was part of the goal in trying to set this up, was to make sure that kind of all of the stakeholders, the public, the LPA, and the commission, had their input on the visioning before a plan was developed and presented for final approval. And then the next item, unless you have more questions, I'll just move on. Are you done with your comments?
Yes.
Okay. The next item, I just wanted to mention, Richard, you said something, and I just want to clarify it. You said the police can't arrest when we were talking about the homeless issue. And I just want to correct that. It's not that they can't arrest. I think what you were referring to is that there are times where they arrest somebody, they take them down to the jail, and by the time it's processed and everything, it's a short time period before the gentleman or woman is back out on the street. Because, and I want to make that clear, because I don't want there to ever be hesitation of anyone who could be watching this, or any member of the public or board member, if they have, if they witnessed a crime, or they have concern for their safety, I want them to reach out to the police.
And that's what I meant, but the bottom line is Chief Barkley said, it's frustrating to them because they arrest somebody in the morning, they're back on Treasure Island in the afternoon. So in that regard, a lot of times, they don't bother. He did say that at the, but that was, that comment was made at the focus meeting. I'm just stating.
Okay. My understanding, I don't want to debate the issue, but my understanding from the chief is, is that he's been exceedingly clear, that if there's a crime that has occurred, or there's an issue for which they need to arrest somebody, they arrest somebody, even if what occurs is that processing. So that's all. I just want to make that point of clarification. And that was my report, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Where did?
Well, not on what you were talking about. I was going to go back to the visioning sessions, where you could ask for comments from the boards. I didn't have any comment on what you said.
Oh, okay.
But I want to follow up on that. When we meet with the commission, are we going to, is that workshop going to be based off of the information gathered from the two visioning meetings?
Yes. So I anticipate that the, and Catherine, hop in if I'm wrong on this, because they've actually dealt with the consultants. I don't really deal with the consultants, but I believe that the intention is that the consultant will have a report or a summary of what occurred at those public visioning sessions to report on, and then to build upon with the LPA and the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Same as usual for me in regards to contractors just continuing to cause chaos. I know it's not a code enforcement thing, but in our, in paradise, it's out of control. So guys dumping concrete down drains and stuff like that is just unacceptable. And I've alerted everybody, so just keep that on people's radar.
It's true, and code enforcement never calls you back. I never get a call back from them.
Same as always, Jamie, from me.
Not ready for a motion yet. I just wanted to, yeah, did we ask for board comments? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Zoning out. I, for anyone that, I know Diane was there for a while. I think Ross was there for a while. I did the five hours, the three hours on Thursday night, and the two hours on Saturday. I have about twenty pages of notes, so when Diane said is right on, I don't want to start over again.
No, no.
I mean, I will give you, and Richard, and Ross, and probably Diane, two of those, Ross, the view have gone through these wars. Every issue is back on the table again on Every issue was back on the table again on Thursday night and Saturday. There were no pre-conclusions. We're, I don't have to tell you this, we're absolutely skitso in terms of the community. On one, one side wants more green space, the other side wants more density, there was no, you know, staff is going to have a lot on their plate in terms of sorting through those comments. Everything from, you know, the reuse of Treasure Bay, the redevelopment of the commercial areas, you name it, the comments were all over the world. But I wanted to compliment staff on the excellent job you did. They did six breakout sessions. The one thing I heard from everybody there, and there were probably, was it 25, 30, maybe up to 50 people originally?
There was almost 50 people on Thursday.
I would say 50 on Thursday, and there were probably at least 20 to 25 that came back on Saturday because the consultant reported the conclusion on Saturday with the issues raised. It's not anything that all of this board either hasn't dealt with in their past or hasn't raised, so nothing's really off the table, but as Diane said, if we can have that summary before we get to the workshop, I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to look like idiots in front of the city commission either. I would prefer to know when it was that, and I know I've got my notes from the sessions, but it would really benefit all of our members rather than them to have to watch the five hours if they got the summary of what those comments were within the six groups before we have the joint meeting. You know, no surprise again, there's no consensus in the community except that they're absolutely consensus on their love for Treasure Island and they're wanting to maintain a lot of the residential character while really dealing, and I did hear repeatedly redevelopment of commercial areas. So I think there will be a lot of good, open discussion on how we do that, particularly on that main entrance and the aging plazas that we have. So it was really good, and it was well-done, and thank you, staff, but you guys really put, I mean, you were there physically for six hours, so I can only imagine how much prep time that you put into it, so thank you for the efforts.
Will they include the notes from the Treasure Bay discussions into that? I mean, because that was separate from the visionary?
That's a separate visioning effort. I'm sure we can see what they have.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, I think that we could get those to you if that was something you were, but that's not...
I mean, a separate visionary thing's interesting, I mean, if...
I don't think that was, I don't think that session and the issues that were dealt with there were contemplated for inclusion in the comprehensive planning element.
I understand. It just, it came up within the groups is the only reason I...
Of course it did.
And it was hysterically funny.
Of course it did.
Because, you know, we had a couple of golf league members at one table, and the next table you went to, you had younger families who were looking for more, more active use of the site, so it was, it was, that's what I'm saying. We're a little skitso, but I don't tell you...
Good thing I wasn't there. I'd tell them to go to the beach.
Agreed. Go there.
Cut enough green space.
But you guys, thank you for also giving us the social media things. I thought that was really good. Staff is doing everything they can to drive attention to the visioning 2042 effort.
Yes, 2042.
I mean, Richard, you were talking, Mr. Chairman, you were talking about how long it is out on the 50 years on the floodplain management issues, while we're doing a visioning plan for 2042.
Yeah, that's the message we're really trying to drive to everyone, to the public and to everybody, that we're really planning for 20 years from now, so we really want to look at the big picture, like, where do we want to go?
I have 8,000 homeless people living here.
Right?
You're bad, Ross. Anyway... Today is my 66th birthday.
Happy birthday.
It's hard to look at a plan out 20 years without just giggling about it that long.
Diane, what'd you get your neighbor for his birthday?
You keep on getting me confused, I'm on Palm Seesong.
He's right next to you in this board meeting.
Well, that's true.
I moved.
I wished him happy birthday.
Nice, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay, with that, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.